Welcome. Thank you.
You got it.
Let's stand as we pray and then we'll do the pledge. Heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight as we start this meeting. So often, we started with really needing your help and your wisdom in so many things that is talked about tonight. Our agenda is full of so many things and mostly our mind is on the incredible weather that we have outside and we thank you for that. I pray that you'll cause people to be smart in the way that they use their fires and so many things because with all that stuff, it just spread so quick. Protect those firefighters out there that are just waiting for that next one to happen. Be with these commissioners tonight and guide us in everything. We do this in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, County Lead Board here on the...
Yes, sir. Welcome to the Tom Baker Room for the meeting of the County Weed Board. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Here.
Commissioner Munson?
Here.
Commissioner Bakken?
Here.
Commissioner Schwab?
Here.
Commissioner Bitner?
Here.
Chairman Bakken?
Here. First up, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve. Second?
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Chairman Bakken?
Yes. Motion carried. Next up, consideration of the January 21st, 2025 Weed Board minutes.
Move to approve. Second?
Motion second. Further discussion? Hearing done. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Aye.
Chairman Bakken?
Yes. Motion carried. Next item up, our weed officer, Officer Johnson.
Good evening. Weed Board members, Chairman Bakken, I just thought I'd drop in tonight and just do a little bit of an update. That's why it's called the update. I'm just gonna josh through a little bit here. The forms for the self-application, that's the chemical sales. I started last Thursday on the first. Had a few people show up there, but I'm getting a lot more applications in. The contract spraying is also coming in. A lot of interested people this year so far. I just want people out there to know too that they can get the forms at burley.gov down at the NDSCU Extension Office on the expressway and also out at the highway, County Highway Building, right by the front door out there. Getting a few calls, I said, what we're doing here this year is milestone in high noon are the two chemicals going out there. I ordered in some high noon in one gallon instead of just the two fives that we use for the main county rightaways. And a lot of interest in that because it's covering a lot more of a wider spectrum of weeds for the county. Here in the near future, around the 19th, is Spray Sync will be coming out. That Spray Sync system was purchased in 2023. Got it. Getting it put in our county roads, so we're gonna be able to map out everything for NDDA. They wanna get a whole statewide type thing. There's still a few counties that don't use the Spray Sync or mapping. They still use the old paper books and such like that, but we're gonna fit in and be a part of NDDA there, so it'll make it look a lot better for us and for the county. Let's see. Like I said, I started selling chemical on last Thursday and I'll be selling through June 26th on the Thursdays from 11 to 1:00. And then also, I talked to our inspector Derek Wall and he, I'm having him come out to go to the distribution center. I bought some new signs for there because the other ones were just kinda weather checky already from just last year. And I'm gonna have him come out, go through the distribution center, so I know that everything, everything is up to snuff, but I want him, I want his authority to say, yes, it is. Also, when Spray Sync comes out to install the systems in the pickups, I'm gonna have Derek come out and our sprayers are gonna be there so they just do a mock inspection. So when they're out on the road, if he does stop them, they have an idea of what's going on. They're not all worried about what's, you know, what they don't have or what they should have and all that kinda stuff. So make it a little easier on them. Let's see here. And then we got the contract signed here the other day through, for NDOT and I gave a copy to Greenhead Spraying, so he needs that for to know what's, you know, what they're expecting of him out along the state highways. Also, there's a dollar amount that they're up to that they want, they're willing to spend or have a budget of $30,000 to do the state, but if it gets about $20,000, $25,000, if we get that much into it, that's when they need me to contact them and let them know that they're starting to run lower on funds, so. But yeah, they're really nice to work with. And then, yeah, that's about all I got, other than just looking forward to get through the spring season and get the year under my belt here, so.
So Darren, capacity-wise, are we back to where we should be now?
As far as the...
As being able to cover the DOT and our stuff and we're all...
Yeah, yeah.
Everything's all back?
The two people that'll be doing the rightaways and the state highways is kinda how we're, I feel that Greenhead will be doing it. They got the two trucks for the roads, our rightaways and the state highways with a backup, but Chris is also doing, you know, he'll be doing our gravel pits and then he's got other jobs that he goes out and does too. So, but yeah, we'll be good.
Good.
Yeah, because they were with Fertilon with Chris, they're with OSI last year. They're dependable people.
Thank you. Any questions for Darren? Anything else to add?
I don't believe so.
All right. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
If you have any questions, feel free to call me.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
With that, the Weed Board is now adjourned.
Okay, I'll call the May 5th, 2025 meeting of the Burley County Commission to order. First item is roll call members.
Commissioner Munson?
Here.
Commissioner Bakken?
Here.
Commissioner Schwab?
Here.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Here.
Chairman Bitner?
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions or anything from anybody there?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Chairman Bitner?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, consideration of the April 21st, 2025 meeting minutes and bills.
I looked at the bills and at the minutes and I moved to approve them.
Second.
Okay to me.
Second.
Motion second to approve the meeting minutes and bills. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Munson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Chairman Bitner?
Yes. Motion carries. Next is consent agenda. We got abatement, special use permit, special event liquor permit, accepting player right away, and a second access permit. Any commissioners wanna pull anything off that consent agenda for discussion? If not?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Chairman Bitner?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Burley County parking lot transfer. That's not exactly what this discussion was about. I had a conversation with the Finance Department and at one point, we had made a decision to sell a parking lot and as part of that, there was some funding that was sitting in an account that I really didn't have a use for it. And somehow or another, and I'd like Lee to give us a little more details on that, but what we ended up with is essentially a non-sufficient funds situation because of some transfers within this fund. Taylor?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I just kinda was the one who dug into this. So just to kinda recap, last year it was, we had received some bills for some specials. I think it was $91,000, totally unrelated to the parking lot fund, I think. I don't wanna speak for the county auditor. I think they just came up with this source of funds. Like you said, it was this parking lot fund that we had sold. The parking lot didn't need the fund anymore. The issue was with how it was presented. It was presented as a transfer of the 2024 budget, which was $70,000, and there was some back and forth about where that $21,000 would come from. And it was made clear, I guess, that there was 2023 budget that was unused that rolled into the general fund. And that's not true for a parking lot fund because it's a special revenue fund, which is like a savings account. So whatever gets unused in there rolls forward to the next year within that same fund. And so essentially in 2023, we had no expenses in the fund. And, but the budget of $70,000 in that fund was just funded with reserves. So then in 2024, we funded the budget with the same pool of reserves, so just the same pool of money rolling forward from year to year. And so it's kinda like we double counted that money and that left us about $21,000 with negative cash. And then it was also the way it was handled where rather than a transfer, the expenses were just recorded in the parking lot fund. And so that's now, the parking lot fund has negative cash. And I know the last piece of the commission action was to close the fund, but we can't close it with the negative cash. So to fix it, we need to kinda transfer money from the general fund into the parking lot fund so that it brings it back up to a zero balance so we can close that fund.
Bless you.
Okay. So the most obvious question then is, like it was at the time, where's the additional funding supposed to come from to cover the non-sufficient funds or the negative cash balance? Did you have any suggestions on that?
There are nothing that we could see because I know, you know, in this case, we were closing a fund that wasn't used. And so you can't, you're not supposed to really transfer money out of special revenue funds unless you're closing the fund or unless you're, you know, reimbursing yourself for an expense that should have been in that fund. And so in this case, it was just, there was, we're missing $20,000 of funding. So it'll have to be general fund reserves unless some other source of funds was available that I'm not aware of.
Okay, I wonder if the auditor would have some kinda suggestions on that? Because I think that there was two accounting transactions that listed that as, if I remember right, as parking fees rather than specials or something.
Yeah, that's, because how it should have been done was, like I said, those were specials on and the bills are in your packet. I think it was the courthouse, the Provident Building, some other rural county property. So that should be recorded in the general fund as special assessments. But instead, they were recorded in the parking lot fund rather than transfer money out of the parking lot fund and they were split between two years and I'm not, the point we did it doesn't work here anymore, so I'm not sure why it was split between two years. But what that then did was it, because again, that '23 budget was originally unused, so it rolled into '24 to fund that. Well, then we used all of '23, so there was nothing left to use for '24. So it was that about, as of today, it's $20,330 that are negative in that fund.
So if I remember right, that was a February meeting?
Yeah, February. I don't remember the exact date.
February 24. Is it normal to go and backdate things into 2023, 2024?
Not typically. There's certain rules where within that 60-day window, if it was '23 activity, you know, if we had, you know, done something or someone did services for us in December and for whatever reason, we didn't get the bill until February, we can put it back in that previous year. But in this case, and I'm not sure exactly what year you would have put it in, you know, I know, you know, taxes are paid in arrears, but we should not have split it between two years, no matter how we did it, so.
Okay. Well, Auditor Splanskowski, do you have some suggestions or an explanation on that?
Yeah, so probably what should have happened was we should have transferred those funds, like Taylor was saying, over to the special assessments GL and then paid that out of there. I was reviewing those emails that you sent me and I can't say how things happened back then. I can't say why they were done that way. They should have been done, to my knowledge, they should have been transferred from that parking lot fund over to the special assessments account. And then from the special assessments account, they should have been paid. So we should probably look at that, what the balance of that special assessments account that we have for such things. We wanted to go ahead and pay those specials off so we didn't have to pay any interest on it. So probably what I would do is speak with Lee and Taylor, look at what the balance of that particular account is and go ahead and make that square.
Well, I think we just heard that the balance is overdrawn, right?
In the parking lot fund, yeah. I'm not sure...
But not in the specials account.
Yeah. I'm not sure about the specials.
Okay. Let's leave that item on the agenda for the next meeting and you guys will come up with a suggestion for how to resolve that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, primary residence credit. Well, we recently had a problem with, or we had a situation with the primary residence credit where we received primary residence credit from the state of North Dakota on March 28th and then the state law says that that money needs to be distributed to all the other taxing entities, the political subdivisions, cities, townships, park districts and whatnot, within 14 days. And I understand it was late April by the time that got done. So I was hoping for an update from the auditor on the status of the primary residence credit and the apportionment to the other political subdivisions. And then it was further kinda complicated because the $10.7 million that we received on the 28th ended up gathering interest. And so the question was, and I contacted and consulted with the state's attorney about that, is how do we handle that interest then next? And so, you know, her recommendation, and I concur with it, was that the interest that was accrued during that period of time should be apportioned the same as the tax that earned that interest. And so that we're all up to date on that. Auditor Splanskowski, you wanna weigh in on that?
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners, thank you very much. So as of right now, the apportionment has been done. The political subdivisions have received their funds. We cut checks to the mobile homes who deserved our required repayment on that particular primary residence credit. So a little bit of quick background, as you see in your packet, Chairman Bitner requested that I put the emails regarding this in the packet, which I did, which is well over 100 pages. There's a lot of discussion going on about this. It's really been a moving target with this whole thing. However, that being said, we were able to get that payment out, the allocation's done, and we had to cut over 800 checks to mobile homes in order to, well, that was, that's what their payment was. Over 800 individual mobile homes because they pay ahead. Real estate property owners pay in the rears and the mobile homeowners pay ahead of schedule. So that was kinda, there's kind of a transition period here over the course of the next few years with that primary residence credit. But that being said, all the payments have been going out. And also, like Chairman Bitner said, the interest that those funds have accrued. I did see those emails between yourself, Lee, and Julie Lawyer. And definitely, we can work with the Finance Department on figuring that out. Now, just a kind of a heads up to all the different political subdivisions. We ended up having, we're gonna have to do two dispersments in April because we had to do the one for the PRC and then we have to do one at the end of the month. So they're gonna be seeing, this next dispersment is gonna be very small because the first one that we did included the PRC and everything up till that time. So, yeah, the issue has been addressed. I definitely apologize to anybody for the delay and we'll be looking for this in the future to be able to streamline it.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Thank you for getting to take care of it.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Woodcox?
Was there any solid reason why these were over two weeks late getting done? We had the two-week period and it's a normal course of doing business and all of a sudden, we're over, well over two weeks late. And I just can't understand why. I mean...
Yeah, and that's a good question. So that's kinda like what you said, it's a normal course of doing business. This particular one is not. It's a completely different, it has its own set of rules. And to be honest with you, I was not aware of the deadline because it wasn't really included that much in the trainings. And when it was discussed in the trainings, it was earlier last year, at which time the discussions were still being had. Like I said, this PRC has been a moving target. The State Treasurer's Office has been trying to navigate these waters as best they can and really, it really just, we weren't quite aware of exactly when the date was. And so we were just planning on doing it with our normal apportionment every month.
Any other questions or comments on that one? Okay, we'll move on. Consideration of submitting a petition to the governor to remove Auditor Treasurer Splanskowski. What you have seen is a rough draft of a petition and I do know based on conversations with the state's attorney that there will and should be changes to that. And I would ask for any input from Commissioners to the state's attorney for any additional changes or additions. State's Attorney and Lawyer, wanna have any comments on that? Because I do have a couple of things to add that came to mind afterwards.
Thank you, Commissioner Bitner. Julie Lawyer, state's attorney. I had included that petition as a draft because the commission had talked about wanting that done or were considering that. And I know it was tabled until this meeting so that the documents could be published before this was decided. And so I went ahead and kinda drafted what a petition would look like with some of the information that I already had. I would point out, it is a very rough draft. There are some things in brackets at the end, especially where we're asking for relief because that is the relief that's available. And so that's up to, I guess, the commission, if you want to include that, that would be the immediate suspension while the hearing is pending. And then the relief that's not in brackets, which is the removal from office, is obviously incorporated in that petition because that's what the petition is for. And so it is a very rough draft just with the information I had at the time, so you'd have an idea of what you were looking at with that petition. A little bit of answers to the questions that came up at the last meeting. The statute does require that the petition is filed with the Attorney General's Office. The Attorney General's Office then has 30 days to investigate and provide a recommendation to the governor as to whether or not a hearing should be had and that a special, I think it's a special commissioner is what it's called in the statute, would be appointed to oversee that hearing. And so there's a lot of investigation and recommendations that are done. If it does go to a hearing, then the special commissioner is responsible for setting up that hearing and taking the evidence and then writing up a report, giving the recommendation to the governor, who then has the ultimate decision. So that's kind of the workflow for a petition for removal.
Okay. Commissioners, I think that, like we said, this is a rough draft. I don't think there was an intention that we would take action to approve that draft at this meeting because I wanted to make sure that all Commissioners had an opportunity to provide input on the rough draft for anything that needs to be included. And welcome to have a discussion about it. Otherwise, if you have no other questions or comments, then I would ask you to work with the state's attorney very soon so that she has time to present an actual draft at probably the next commission meeting.
We can do that. I would suggest that if you're going to meet with me, you just give me your suggestions. I'm not going to give you any information as to what any other commissioner suggested. It's just for you to provide me with information to provide a, another rough draft basically to the commission. That way, we're not in violation of any open meetings laws. So I won't be passing information. You can give me information that you want included and then I'll have a full draft from, input from all the Commissioners to discuss then at the next meeting.
Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Okay, so we'll keep that item for the agenda for the next...
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Woodcox?
Can we make any suggestions on it right now?
Yes, you can.
Okay, item number nine in the petition. There's no amount in there of how much money we were underinvesting, which is well over a million. I think it's very important that we get that in there. Maybe this is not the place to put it. Maybe we wait till we present the evidence to the state's attorney's office, but I definitely think that should be in there. An approximate, we don't know the exact number, but an approximate number.
Right. Along those lines, I had a conversation with the state's attorney about that and with the finance director and she had asked that the Finance Department present that sort of information to her for that.
Has that been done yet?
No, I don't think it's been done yet. Julie?
We have not had an opportunity to meet to discuss that yet. This is, again, like I said, this is in the preliminary stages, so I didn't do a lot of work to put it together because I knew that the commission was going to be considering whether or not to do this at this meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Woodcox?
Quick question. So all of the stuff that we've accumulated over the past year or whatever, does that all have to be in here? Or when it gets down to the presentation, we're gonna have a lot more than just this to present? Are we gonna have that opportunity to present that whole?
So at this point, what happens with the petition is it's sent to, like I said, the Attorney General's Office and then a complaint has to be filed with the governor's office. So the petition just kind of lays out for the Attorney General what issues we see that meet the criteria for removal. So some of the things we've talked about don't necessarily meet the criteria for an actual complaint to the governor. It may be included in the petition just so that the Attorney General has all the information to do their investigation and then it's the, it actually comes back to the state's attorney or the Attorney General to file that complaint then with the governor as to what to proceed on.
So in short, I think the investigation that would ensue with the Attorney General's Office would consider all of the information that we have compiled.
I'm just concerned that that all gets in there because it's very important to our side, I would think, so just so we get everything in there.
I think we should all work towards that with the state's attorney and everybody that has information. Because actually, my concern, my biggest concerns here at this point was a simple fact that on at least three occasions here, the auditor's office is not following state law. You had the, you had an issue with a lawsuit that wasn't consistent with the state law. You had an issue with the primary residence credit that was not consistent with state law. And then you had an issue with W-2s and tax forms for employees that not consistent with federal law. So my concern, my biggest concern is the lack of adherence to the law. And that should be a significant concern to everybody, not just us, so. Any other questions or concerns on that? Okay. We'll keep that on the agenda for...
Mr. Chairman, can I get a vote on that?
Sure.
I just don't think we can kick it down the road. I don't wanna kick it down the road anymore, so. If they wanna pass a motion, if somebody wants to pass a motion to table, that's fine with me, but...
Well, I don't want it tabled. I want it to go to a final petition, in my opinion. I think, like I said, concerns about the violation of the law, not just, this is not just an attitude thing. So if you wanna consider a...
So in that interim that we postponed this for another two weeks, those three concerns you have about the law are very legitimate. Are they gonna be, are they going to be itemized in this petition? They are, but in general, not specifically. Well, if they're in there already, why do we need to move it down the road another two weeks?
Just in case there's more to add, because we had a preliminary conversation about this, the state's attorney and I. And this was her first shot at it, you know, she's been pretty busy too. We wanted to make sure that the entire commission had a chance to weigh in on it. Make sure I wasn't overlooking something or, because, you know, it's not a one-man band here. This is a five-member board.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the petition as submitted.
Okay, I have a motion.
So that would mean that there's nothing added to this at this point?
Right. Present as is.
Chairman, I'm gonna second that so we can have some conversation.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Further conversation then?
The concern I have, and I agree with Commissioner Woodcox, but as Julie stated, anything in here in parentheses is for discussion. And so that can't be in this document. We need to get those finalized by the state's attorney's office in the next two weeks and bring it back, as you suggested.
Right. That was my goal, was to get it to a finalized form. Because you're, you know, the initial shot at it was clear, the state's attorney made it very clear, it's a rough draft.
It's a rough draft and we're not ready with rough draft.
No, and I understand. Now, I would hopefully, an additional motion to allow her to move forward with the final draft would be in order, I believe. So, you know, if the commission would consider that, I think that would be a little more appropriate. But any other conversation on this motion?
I'm just expressing my concern that we move this along. We can't keep kicking it down. We've been at it for well over a year and we all know what is going on. I'm just concerned that rightfully so, we get everything in there that we... I'm just concerned that rightfully so, we get everything in there that we need right now and be done with it and not push it down the road.
Would you consider an amendment to the motion to finalize this for a final draft for the next commission meeting? Would that be acceptable?
Oh, yeah, you can amend the motion, anything you want. I don't want to make, I don't want to make the motion.
You just did.
No, I didn't. I said, I don't mind it, but I've.
Oh, okay. Well, if you want, we'll have a vote on the first motion, and then we'll.
You can amend the motion as is.
It's your motion to amend?
Anybody can amend my motion, correct?
Oh.
Before we vote. Then we vote on the amendment, and then we vote on the major.
I would move that we amend the motion to allow the state's attorney's office, two weeks till the next meeting, to create the final draft for our approval.
With the request of additional information from any of the commissioners?
Yes.
Concerns or whatever. Second.
Okay, I have a motion to second on an amendment. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Monson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken?
No.
Chairman Bitner?
Yes. Motion carries. Now, as to the original motion.
As we approve the amendment, so now we have to.
Motion as amended. The motion as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Monson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken?
No.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Chairman Bitner?
Yes. Motion carries. So that'll be on the agenda for the next regularly scheduled county commission meeting. Item number seven, discussion on preliminary resolution for the redesignation of auditor State's attorney lawyer, did you want to weigh in on that as well? I think you have the preliminary resolution in front of you, and we've had some discussions about changes.
Again, a very rough draft based on the discussions that were had at the last meeting about going forward with, instead of redesignating the office as an appointed office, to reorganize the office, to have a treasurer who would handle the financial aspects of that office and have that treasurer be appointed. I, in that preliminary resolution, it's very basic, just kind of outline of what I took away from that meeting and what I believed that you wanted the reorganization plan to look like. I have not yet drafted a plan. I wanted to get some guidance as to whether or not, what that preliminary resolution was, is what the commission was thinking about and considering before I move forward any further.
Okay. Commissioner Bakken?
Just for a point of clarification, it, we're not appointing somebody. This is a hired position that goes through the hiring process with HR.
That's typically how the appointed department heads are done. Like, the HR director is that way, where you put out an ad, you do.
Right. I have a problem with the nomenclature of appointed because we're not appointing somebody. We're hiring a qualified individual.
And we can change that wording as well. And the plan would outline all of that as well.
You're, you're talking about the separation of, of the hiring of a treasurer.
Right. I, I still have a hang up with, we're not appointing somebody as a board. We are hiring somebody to fill a position through HR, just like anybody else goes through a vetting process.
Yeah, I think that's doing.
And I, yeah, I use that term to keep it separate from having it be an elected position, correct?
Right. So, so the basic concept is really what we're, you know, what we're looking at. And I think based on public input and whatnot, that seems to be a pretty, a pretty solid plan, pretty solid preliminary plan moving forward.
The other thing I wanted to point out, too, is I left the initial information the same. So like, the enactment date is the same as was on that other preliminary resolution because you're reorganizing the office, not changing the nature of the office. That doesn't have to wait until the end of the term. The only thing that you can't do with this preliminary resolution is shorten the term of a sitting officer or change the salary of the sitting officer within the plan. But the plan can take effect before the term is over, if that makes sense.
So you're reorganizing, it's, it's, it's not doing away with any offices or anything, right?
Correct.
So the reorganizing can happen real soon after the plan is adopted.
Correct. There doesn't have to be a specific start date for that as to the beginning of the next term of that office. The only thing is the person who's sitting in that office keeps that term for the remainder of their term, and the salary doesn't get changed regardless of whether you rearrange duties or anything like that.
Right. Yeah. And the reason we're talking about salaries is because the state's attorney and I had a conversation about, you know, the salary for an auditor as a, as an elected person after doing all this reorganization that really changes the duties of the office and really takes away the, a lot, a lot of the duties so that the compensation would be, need to be, where we started at was closer to the statutory minimum under state law and then at the suggestion of the state's attorney that there'd be a path forward for once a newly elected auditor gets specific training and, and, you know, like the association of county training, the elections training and whatnot, that there's a path forward for increasing the salary so that it's commensurate with experience and abilities. Is that?
And knowledge, yes.
And knowledge, yeah.
Correct.
And so that's, that's kind of where we're leaning with the plan and the, and the proposal unless, Commissioner Schwab?
Julie, I, commissioners, I would like to see this county manager or administrator effective 2020, 27. I don't remember making a decision on that.
Again, I.
And that needs to be struck because I don't think we need a county administrator.
Again, I put everything in there that we had talked about, which is an option. And this is for you to discuss as to what you actually want in there, what you don't want in there. Because another thing that wasn't necessarily discussed by the commission, but I think needs to be discussed, is when the reorganization occurred from, I think it was 98 to 2003, when it finally took effect. Part of what happened was the tax equalization office got grouped in with the auditor treasurer office, and they shared employees for duties. Now that they're moving over to the Provident Life Building and they'll be in separate areas, we should look at whether or not they should still share those same employees, or we should have specific employees for tax equalization and then for the auditor treasurer offices. So I added that as well, which is something that this commission needs to discuss.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of concerned because you resolved that the effective April 1st, 2027, the office of treasurer and county manager administrator shall be appointed. I don't think that belongs in there. I really don't. It's, it's like saying in 2027, we're going to have an administrator. I don't think that belongs in there and.
I see no harm in removing that particular sentence as far as that, that word administrator, if that's what you're after. But I, go ahead.
Or the word shall, then it's our option. It's available then at that point rather than.
Use the word may?
May, shall.
May.
May.
Well, there's, there's actually two places in here where, where that's in here and mentions the county administrator, and I can support that.
Well, if you separate out the administrator and use the may and that.
Yep. And my, my reason for that is that's a date then that everybody's going to expect the county administrator. And I don't think people understand it's going to cost upwards of $300,000 a year to set up that office. He's going to have to have staff, he's going to have to, and I think that should be separate.
I think that's the point we'll take, and Commissioner Woodcock.
Did we, did we budget for a county administrator and staff for next year, for 2026?
Oh, yeah.
No. Not that I'm aware of.
Can our auditor answer that?
Not.
The 2026 budgets have not been presented to me in any way at all.
Or 25.
25.
25 did not have an administrator.
25, we took it out, right?
Correct.
Correct.
So I think that's, I would agree that that's something we haven't decided yet. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm concerned that when we just, back when we put these together, it was because we were going to save a bunch of money. And that, different circumstances, different, a lot more duties now, a lot more activity than we had before. But if we separate these two, we're going to increase expenses. I want us to analyze that, see how much it's going to cost us to. And we got time, it won't be effective till April of 27. But I'd like to look, see how, is this going to cost us? Two, $300,000 to separate these two and new offices and new staff? And we got to evaluate whether this is worth it. I know that the public indicated they wanted to keep the elected auditor's office, which is going to be part of this too. But is it going to be economically feasible to separate these two and increase all the, the expenses accordingly?
And an analysis does have to be done as part of putting that plan together, which would incorporate that as well.
Okay. Good.
I think we're making progress. So you have enough information to, to return with a?
Another draft.
Another draft?
Yep.
Okay.
So seven stays on for next meeting, too?
Yep.
Seven stays on the agenda for the next meeting, moving forward. Public hearing, a petition to vacate section line. This must be under Marcus.
Good evening, commissioners. We do have a public hearing this evening in regards to a section line request. As you know, under the North Dakota Century Code, the county board may close a section line if requested by the residents or the property owners in a particular area. We have received a petition, the petition and the map showing that location are included in your packet. The first step after receiving the petition and accepting the petition is, is then to conduct a public hearing and determine if there is a public benefit for closing of this particular section line or if there is, ascertaining if there's any damage caused by the closing of the section line. This particular section line is a little bit different than we usually see. We usually see one out in the middle of the, the sticks kind of thing, and that's where we're closing a section line axis. This one is actually on the edge of a subdivision. Now, this particular subdivision is right adjacent to the city of Bismarck, and so it did go through the ETA process as far as approval goes. Now, under the section lines laws with cities, once the city plats a particular plat, they can plat right over a section line, and it goes away as part of that plating process. The county, we don't. So this particular portion of this subdivision, when it was platted, did not choose, they did not choose to enter the city at that time. So it's really still a county, county lots, basically, at this point. So as part of that, the section line is included on that, the particular, those lots that are adjacent to the section line. So after the, you conduct the public hearing, we're just asking for some direction as far as if you're willing to close the section line, let us know, and we'll take the process to move forward and do that for the county board. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any commissioners, any questions? I just had a comment. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks to me like there's, there's an actual road, like, right on the front yard of those lots, right?
That is correct.
And that, that's not necessarily, I guess, the road that's already there is the public benefit, right? If, if I'm not.
And if the county board can interpret that, and we have done that in the past where a particular development provides a county ward, a county road in lieu of that section line, they just move it over, basically. That has been done in the past.
Okay, so if, if we did that, would you, would you say that that particular road became the section line then?
I.
I mean, is that?
I, I would not say it becomes the section line. I would say that's just basically substitution for the section line. And, and keep in mind, section line, road is the most predominant use of that section line, but you can hike on a section line, you can, you can do anything else. It's, it's for access to the residents, so.
Is there development activity on the other side of the property line?
On the north side? Not that I know of, but there's probably someone looking at the possibility of developing that in the near future. Yep.
And there's nothing there now?
There's nothing there at this time. Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Marcus, if we vacate that, that'll actually go belong to the owner of them lots, right?
Yes. The property in this particular case, that section line still automatically still belongs to them. It's just the public has a right to use it until you vacate the section line.
Well, I didn't want to get into one of them deals like they got out at Lincoln where they're fighting over right-of-way. You know, the people of the lots say, well, you're taking away our backyard.
I would just add, and Commissioner Bitner is correct in the sense that there is no way we're going to put a road over that particular section line. Because you can see there's a road proposed just south of that, there's another road proposed just north of that. Those lots will not have roads back on front end, backside of them. So I, I don't see us ever building a road in that location, but access is an issue. Yeah, so.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to open a public hearing. Okay, this is a public hearing for a vacation of a section line. Anybody wish to speak? Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Bitner. You have Landon Naimler with Swinson Hagan, hearing representing the Walkers in this case. Yeah, I just add a little bit more detail to what Marcus had already presented to you. This is unusual in another situation in that these parcels were platted, and not only is the section line obviously shown on a plat as we typically would do, but it's actually noted that there is the 33-foot of statutory right-of-way on that side. It's actually noted on the plat, which is unusual. At what point, there was a master plan showing that a possible road was going to come through this area. That has changed since then, so that, that road that will eventually end up in River Road is going to be in another location. But the builders and the developers of there are concerned that people will see that, that statutory right-of-line is still shown on the plat, and they're concerned that they won't be able to build in those areas, they're concerned that the public will have access through their backyard at some point. So it's our goal here is to remove that. There, we're actually going through the same process with the city of Bismarck where portions of the plat have already been annexed into the city, even though it's generally been the state's attorney's opinions that once it's annexed, it's no longer valid. But we want to assure people that it's, there's paperwork to say, hey, you can, you can look this up and see that it has been vacated. But I can answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Bakken?
Landon, what's timeline on this? I just asked for an access purposes.
Sure.
How, how long before the roads get built out?
So, so the roads for, for the subdivision are already in process. Some of them are, are already built at this point, not in front of these lots.
So that is the public access.
That is the public access. There is right-of-way dedicated. The roads are just not built yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Landon.
Thank you.
Okay, it's a public hearing. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Please come up to the phone. Second time, this is a public hearing. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Third and final call, this is a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the vacation of the section line. Any further discussion?
Do we need to list the public benefit?
Public benefit? Well, yes, I think that was made clear.
In the motion.
But the public benefit is the roads are already there. I think if you look at the map in our packet, there's Frisco Way on the one side of those lots, and then you got another set of lots north, and then you got Tulley, T-U-L-E, Lane. So there's public roads on, on both sides on what is typically a yard and a backyard, correct, Marcus? I mean, it's.
I just wanted.
And I would anticipate those. It looks.
Yeah, yeah. I'll add that to the motion.
Okay.
That's public.
Because it, it looks similar to all the other plats that I've seen with the road continuation, you know, it, it comes up to here, and then it's meant to continue. They'll usually put a little cul-de-sac at the end of that, waiting on future development, but.
Basically, it's just a correction for lot size consistency is what this is, so.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, no further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Chair Bitner?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of Sanford bond. Who's got that one?
So there should be an individual on Zoom right now who wanted to go ahead and present this information, if you want to bring them on?
Bring them up.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Ronnie Martin. I am from the law firm Chapman and Cutler, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Sanford. We represent them as bond counsel. The reason that we're here this evening to meet with the county commissioners is to discuss adopting a resolution that would call for a public hearing at the next regularly scheduled commissioner meeting. We're here because Sanford is planning on issuing tax-exempt bonds through the South Dakota Health and Educational Facilities Authority, and a portion of the proceeds of those tax-exempt bonds are anticipated to be used at different facilities located within the county, and the documentation we've provided includes a list of the addresses of such facilities. And upon adoption of the resolution, we would publish the public notice and ask that the county commissioners hold a public hearing. This public hearing is required under Section 147 of the Internal Revenue Code. There's no liability to the county or to the city of Bismarck for these bonds, but under the tax code, in order for Sanford to use tax-exempt bond proceeds at facilities outside of the state of South Dakota, we need to hold a public hearing and have the jurisdiction approve such financing. So that is why we're here this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Commissioners, any questions?
I would move to approve the public hearing be held at our next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Okay, so that, that motion is to approve the resolution requesting the public hearing?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the robe.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bachin?
Yes.
Chair Bitner?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. County Planning Director Flanagan, amend Article 8, Section 30, data centers. Welcome, Mitch.
Good evening, Commissioners. In your packets, in your packets are the ordinance that Julie, the state's attorney reviewed and made some typographical corrections. It's basically, the text remains the same. There are some highlighted, the red crossed outlines were from the last meeting for the suggestive changes. So they would be removed once we finalize this. There is a memo attached that she just, there was discussion on the permit fee, which is on page three of the ordinance. Basically, this is, uh, the fee is based on the hard cost of the construction, not the total value of the buildings. Total value, value of the buildings would include everything inside, the land, everything. That's not what we're, that's not how we're going to arrive at the permit fee. The permit fee would be based on the construction hard cost, basically the building itself. As an example, the Ellendale project had two and a half, he proposed, he believes by the time he's finished, it'll be two and a half million square feet of buildings. If you broke that down to a 75-square-foot per cost, basically, construction cost for these larger buildings, you come up with a, um, a hard cost of $187,000. A hundred, uh, 187 million dollars times the, it's not a 1%, but a 1/10th of a percent fee. In the memo, it says 1%. So the 1/10th of a percent times 187 million is $225,000 for the special use permit. As a comparison, a house that is in construction right now, they're regularly around $400,000 for construction costs. That would be about $40 for that cost of a permit. So that's how relative that would be. And it's, uh, there are other communities that have the same framework or fee structure. These are large buildings. The fee also is, stops at $1 billion, not a trillion, because the, this, according to the Applied Digital, he plans on spending over seven to eight million dollars on these buildings in Dickey County. So these are large structures. They could be, they could come to us. I said, I determined to stop it at $1 billion of hard cost, which would be a three, four times the size of what Ellendale would be. But it's basically breaking down to those, those figures at a 1/10th of a percent of the hard construction cost. Nothing inside, nothing that's attached or bolted down, no computers, none of that. It's just the hard cost of the construction.
So, so your proposed fees for the construction, that's not the building permit, that's the special use permit fees, right?
I'm sorry?
You're, you're talking about special use permit fees or building permit?
Yeah, no, that's a separate issue. That's going to be a lot more. It's based on the fee structures of how we do commercial buildings now. It's going to be two, three times that cost.
Okay, so how does, how does a special use permit fee for this compare to a special use permit fee for anything else? Are you in, in line with that?
Well, they, they start at $300, and they can choose whether it's over $1,000 worth of, over the $300, it goes, you can choose with a percentage fee of up to $1,000 they pay, and then once they're done with the construction, or they figure out the cost of the construction, then that special use permit is applied. Most of these special use permits are $300.
Okay. Well, I personally don't have any problem with the, with the fees. And because it's a special use permit, we can, we can address any concerns with those fees at the time of an application. Commissioner Woodcox?
This doesn't include any inspections you're going to be doing or anything like that, right?
No, uh.
For $1,000, I mean, that's a real minimum, minimum cost if we're going out there 100 times to inspect the building.
Right. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Woodcox, that this, that fee, if you're asking what it would cover?
Right.
Would basically, for these large construction or large projects, there's going to be abundance of county staff time to continually monitor this, and to, to make sure that, you know, the daily operation continues of the operation is relegated to that special use, the outlines of that special use permit. The, the future work that goes into this project over time is going to have to be monitored too as well. If there's, if there's going to be a change in operation, if they're going to change a data center to an IA operation facility, these things are, will be coming back to us for, for monitoring and research and reviewing of a more complicated application. These are very, very complicated applications. They're going to affect our county. They, they're going to affect our future land use plan. They're going to affect the comprehensive plan. We'd have to develop an overlay district. I, how, I mean, the consideration of the impact is how are you going to weave that into our, the, our society here? How, our planning society? How are you going to take a two and a half million square foot building and put it in Burley County somewhere? These are going to have a big change to us. And I don't know if we're going to have any. I don't know. It's, it's just, we're trying to get ready if they do come.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Does this type of building or industry normally go into rural areas? They don't normally go into a city, a city or adjacent to a city. They go out, out in the rural areas. Is that correct?
Commissioner Woodcox, yeah, the smaller ones are, they're in town. There's one for the, oh, I can't think of it. It's in Bismarck here.
DCN.
Yeah, and those are, you know, they can be in town, and there's, there are some that are doing them in their homes now. And that's, that's another thing that we're going to have to discuss, because this, this ordinance doesn't apply to those. This is, this ordinance is for 100 megawatts use of power or more. And so it's, there are going to be smaller ones that could fit easily into a home or into a, into a commercial area. These are, these larger ones, you know, they'll, they'll be sited by PSC because of the service that they're going to have to require, the substations and all that, so that's usually would probably be a rural area or agricultural area.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Munson?
So Mitch, you had answered Chair Bitner's question, so this is the special use permit versus a building permit. Building permit would be separate for the construction of the building. This is a permit for you to determine if this is, or for this commission to determine if that's the right business or the right application in the right area.
Yeah, gather all the information we need to present it to you.
So how would you spend a million dollars in that process? Because you're capping this at a million dollars.
Okay, yeah, but that was, you know, again, we're going back to the impact of how that's going to be affecting Burley County.
But would you spend a million dollars at that?
If I can, Commissioner, I think it's actually a billion. With all the zeros after that. I had to count it several times as well.
It's just another three more zeros, sorry. A billion dollars.
Which would be a million dollars. The billion dollars are total hard costs. They're not the cost of the permit. That's, the permit stops, the permit evaluation of that permit stops at a billion dollars.
Right, but we wouldn't charge someone a billion dollars for a special use permit?
No, that's not, that's, you're reading it wrong.
That's why I want to.
Those are the project costs. They're separate.
Right, so that's the building permit cost. This is the special use permit. So I'm looking for a maximum on a special use permit. When you're, when you say from 300 up to $100,000, I'm fine with that. If it's $250,000, I'm fine with that, but I'm not going to list a million dollars. I personally wouldn't as, as the top end of a permit application.
Well, this could be a very, very large building, weight three, four times larger than the Ellendale site.
I get that. My ask is, how would you spend that permit fee if it's a million dollars?
If we have, well, first off, if we had complaints coming through this, to this, to this board for an auditory study, where are we going to find that auditory study? It's going to be an engineer. Most likely, he's not going to be in the state of North Dakota. So we would have to pay for that to determine whether there are violations and, and continue and monitor of that if there, if there are changes, or if there is a different application in this building. These, they're not just going to issue the permit, and then if we don't, you know, we don't hear anything, that's, that'd be great. There's no complaints, that'd be awesome. But if there's going to be located next to people who do not want this building next to them, then we'll have a constant monitor out there telling us that there's a problem. So these are things, I don't know what an auditory engineer would cost, but it could be more than six figures, I can guarantee.
Commissioner Bachin?
I just think it's a little steep on the high end. Why, I've got concerns about some of these facilities. A lot of that lies with the siting and what some of the cost to ratepayers are. Those all fall under Public Service Commission. But there's a little bit of a juggling act about, are we pro-business? Are we building tax base, which takes burden off of our taxpayers? And I think those numbers presented are a little bit steep for, are we open for business in Burley County? So, you know, we're not doing a moratorium. We're not discussing eliminating projects coming into the county, but if you attach two tie-up dollar amount to it, it's basically what you're doing.
Yep.
So I'm a little reticent on where that line falls, that yes, we're open for business. We're also protecting our residents in the capacity that we can. Like I said, I've got more concerns on the Public Service Commission side with siting and ratepayers and everything else. But I think these numbers are a little bit steep where I'm comfortable, or not comfortable with, are we crossing a line where we're precluding business by just, hey, we're attaching this really high dollar amount to it. If you want to come, great, but it's going to cost you an arm and a leg, and, and I'm a little torn on that.
Are you, are you looking at, are you looking at the, the top number? Yeah, or a cap or, or something? What, what would you base that on?
That's a great question.
You know, he's, he's kind of, you know, the, it's kind of a wide open thing, but without knowing the value of something that's being done, how would you come up with an appropriate? You know, if it starts out at 300 bucks, and if it's a little thing like goes in your garage, well, I wouldn't, because that's 150 megawatt bottom on that.
This wouldn't affect that much.
Commissioner Schwab?
Which brings up, we still haven't got any kind of an ordinance. If a data center comes in and the power goes out, that the citizens get first shot at the power. And there's nothing in here that covers that.
I don't know if that's an effort.
You know, when, when these, what I'm saying is when the companies come in, one thing, Mitch, is we need it in writing that they don't get the power and supersede the citizens that are here now, farmers and the residents. You know, we need that in writing, do they?
It's outside of our, it's outside of our wheelhouse.
That's the power companies that would have to regulate that.
Mr. Chair.
PPA's and the Public Service Commission.
Public Service, yep.
A lot of that goes through the PPA.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
I don't like it.
They have to get written verification that the utility provider has sufficient capacity to provide for this building.
Right.
To provide for this service. So that means they've already got service here. They're going to have to have additional service provision to those, to this building. They have to provide that written verification from probably Capital Electric or, or Otter, well, not Otterchild, but Mondex.
Whoever the supplier is.
Suppliers.
Commissioner Bachin?
And just for a little bit of an insight, the way this functioned, when this data center started popping up, and the crypto mining side of things started popping up, was we were approached at the city of Bismarck about this. And to the extent of going through the numbers going, hey, there's a little excess load here. There's a little excess load power here. There's a little excess power here. And they wanted to put at all of those sites. And in some cases, it was dropping down a container in a, not necessarily industrial area of the city of Bismarck. And I think that's where a lot of our concerns lie too, on the county side. But I, we need to figure out a, kind of a better workable number that's not perclusive to being open for business, but still protecting our residents. You know, like the siting and everything, that, that's all Public Service Commission and what the power companies can provide. But on that smaller scale, they're looking for wherever there's a hole in the power grid. If, if there's excess power, somebody's looking at it. That's what we dealt with at the city. That same capacity is going to be looked at out in the county. Quite often, there's a larger load available somewhere in the county, so just, just for point of reference.
Well, let's back up now. With regard to the fee structure and whatnot, do you have a proposed amount? Do you have, or you want further study on that? What are your, where are you headed?
Mr. Chairman?
You know, I'm interested.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Woodcox?
The one that's being billed, you said Ellendale, right? What was their maximum fee structure?
I don't think they had any, go ahead. I don't think they had any, any rules down there.
Yeah, they didn't, I don't even believe they had a permit issued, but the, the Ellendale project was two and a half million square feet. When he's going to be finished, the whole project was two and a half million. And if we base those hard costs at $75 per square foot for these type buildings, these tilt-up industrial buildings, his, his value would have been $187 million. Times one, times 1/10th of a percent, his permit fee for Burley County would have been $225,000.
For just the permit fee?
Just a special use permit.
Special use permit.
Right.
Building is going to be much more than that.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Woodcox?
What if we, if this thing is big, and would we end up with one or two or three people down there full-time, monitoring what they're doing, or would that be under the regular building permit process? And are we, are we capable of charging enough to do that? Because that's, if we end up with one or two people, that could be cheap for us, I mean.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Woodcox, the, it's the daily operations and continual, continuation of those operations that we have to monitor. It's, um, it's not, I don't believe we're going to be out there every day, no. But once this thing is up and running, we issue the COO, it's up and running. We have to also monitor, you know, and we get one complaint on this thing. What do we, we have to hire an auditory engineer to determine what this auditory decibel level is at? I mean, it's.
You mentioned $75 a foot to build this. Can you build anything for $75 a foot anymore?
That, I got that figure from the assessor, the county assessor.
I know houses, I don't know what.
That's, I mean, these larger structures.
You might know more about, you certainly know more about it than I do, but I don't think you can build anything for $75 a foot.
I don't, I don't, uh, I don't, I don't build two and a half million square foot facilities. Maybe there's an economy of scale there.
Mr. Chair.
A lot of roof and not a lot of wall. I, I just simply don't have an answer. That sounds pretty low to me, but.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, on the smaller buildings, it can go up to 100, 125 square foot. But these are million-square-foot buildings. The larger the building, the cheaper the construction costs because of the air. Then it's, it's just more volume.
That's the economy of scale thing, but like I said, I don't build anything that big, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Commissioner Munson?
I would not have an issue with a top end of $250,000. You asked for a number.
Yeah.
That's my thought.
Yeah, okay.
Remember that?
You have any issue with that at this point? Because we can always change it in the future.
Well, right. This is an ordinance. We need to get an ordinance in place.
We need something in place, yeah.
And, and when the state gets, the association of counties gets through their process of their.
And and when the state gets, the association of counties gets through their process of their model ordinances, we're going to look at this again. But I really want something in place and Commissioner Bachman said it, I think, the best. We are open for business. If we put this stuff in place, it shows like we're not. And I don't think that's the right message. So a maximum of $250,000 for the special use permit would be
adequate.
Adequate.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion?
State's Attorney Lawyer was looking at me funny earlier, so I wanted to make sure she had an opportunity to say what she wanted to say. That there's a little smirk on her face a little bit.
The way it's written, the way I read it, is the special use permit fee can be up to $1 billion. So that should be reworded so that it's clear. If this motion passes, then I would suggest that under fees, it say the special use permit fee will be based on .001 times total project cost for a special permit fee no greater than whatever your maximum dollar value is, just to make that clear.
I think that's what the intent is.
Yep.
So that would change the language according to
Yep.
the motion. No, that's what his motion is.
That's what my motion is.
That's my suggested language for the ordinance if that motion passes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox. Is this just a vote on that fee or the whole ordinance with that fee included? What are we voting on?
Mine was just the fee.
Okay, yeah, yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bachman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
No.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes, motion on the fees carry. Next is on the next question is on the ordinance itself.
I move we approve the ordinance as submitted with the, of course, we got the restriction on there already, so.
With the amended fee.
With the amendment, amended language.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Munson.
State's Attorney Lawyer, can you, I don't know if you've looked at the decommissioning plan. Is that legal?
I did look at that. I did look at that and I couldn't find anything in state law that prohibited it.
Okay.
Actually, the PSC has a pretty robust decommissioning plan for coal, oil and gas and the reclamation thereof. And it's been updated as, I'm assuming this is probably going to fall under some of that on the reclamation side. Because that's kind of the, been the standard is what the state practices are, building out that language in the coal sector.
Sure.
So this is probably going to get there as well, so there shouldn't be anything in statute that precludes that language being included until which time state law would supersede it.
My only question, when I, when I, when I was looking through the dollars, now I have to find that. It felt like we were asking for more money than what it costs. We're asking for 125%
Right.
of the estimated cost to be in a bond or to be set aside for reclamation. So if this building truly costs $187 million or $250 million, this requires them to have 125% of that set aside for a reclamation process.
Mr. Chairman, wouldn't that be PSC's responsibility to, or is that a county's responsibility?
It's gray right now.
You know, I think.
It's gray right now.
Gray.
The answer that I would have to that is that there's going to be state regulations eventually here. This is probably just a placeholder in the meantime. I don't, I don't think in the end it's going to really change anything.
The Planning and Zoning Commission was very concerned that this would become a Burley County cost. And so my initial motion was not to have that in here. But as the table talked, I became concerned that it was a Burley County concern. I just don't know if that 125% is right.
How do you, how do you?
I don't know how you estimate reclamation.
That's, that's the whole thing.
Well, and and I think this is another statement that says we're not open for business.
Yeah, given batteries and the materials that are in there, it could be a costly reclamation project. Because, oh yeah, I would be okay with a different number, but
What number?
What number?
There you go.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Is it possible that we contact other counties around the, not just, not just North Dakota, but around to see what they've got for closed down costs and some of these, if any?
I'm going to, I'm going to give Mitch a lot of credit here. He has worked on this extremely hard and has went through a lot of other ordinances to get this information. And I appreciate the work he's done and I'm not trying to take it apart. I just, I wish I had some better information on reclamation cost.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Woodcox, there are six other ordinances that I looked at and they all have a reclamation or the surety bonds to clean up the site. It's not for applied digital, 200, 300 million, you know, $6 billion with the construction out there in these tilt up buildings that are, you know, they're not dangerous or whatever. This, this is for somebody who comes to this board that wants to put a data center in a pole barn or in Conex boxes or in in a cheaply built steel building. And it's for the cleanup of, all right, let's just take the applied digital again. I don't want to pick on them, but he's going to have a 700, 670,000 gallon diesel tank on this site. Over 60 diesel generators that produce three megawatts apiece. What would we do? How do we clean that up? How would we clean up if they left 300,000 lithium batteries from these computers? I mean, these are, these are issues that we, we have no idea how much it's going to cost. But these are what we have to be prepared for because this board will be issuing the permit. And this board will have to deal with the cleanup.
Commissioner Bachman.
My question is, in your research, Mitch, and thank you for all the work you've done on this, but granted, the state winds up doing a lot of this bonding out. Have you found any comps from what the state does for reclamation projects and anything of this nature? Because I know they're not there yet, but because like Chair Bittner said, this is going to wind up being a placeholder.
Let's hope not. It's the, I have not. I can find out tomorrow. I can, well, as soon as I can, I can find out.
Okay.
I think in the absence of any better numbers, that it's good to have something and let those companies come in and convince us that they, we want to do business here. We think this is a restriction and we can modify it.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Munson.
So, and again, this is special years permit. So they're coming to us with their special use permit. If this said 25%, not 125%, but what was being presented to the board was a Conex box process. We could change that number, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Nothing says we can't.
Right. So my motion would be to move that to 25%, but to be evaluated at the special use permit process.
With the ability to add it into.
We can change anything.
Depending on scope of a project.
Right.
I think 25, 25%?
I
No.
Okay.
No, absolutely not. And as a contractor, I couldn't agree to that.
Pardon me?
That would be way too low as a contractor. That's too low. You can't you can't reclaim a site for 25% of the cost to build it.
Chair Bittner, what, in your professional knowledge, is there a number that you're comfortable with?
I wouldn't go any lower than 50%, I can tell you that right now. And then I'd be worried about, this is new ground we're covering. This is batteries.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, he's, he's talking to 650,000 gallon fuel tank. You know, that's refinery size.
Yeah, Marcus would love that tank.
Yeah, that would keep him going for, you know.
So what about 75% knowing that this is a placeholder? And because that's going to be commensurate with the scope of the project if it's Conex boxes versus a smaller facility versus a larger facility. Because I think where this is going to fall, there's going to be a lot of time that the state's going to have to address issues as well. And I know there's been some discussions about what a reclamation project looks like on a state level. So I don't think this is going to be a placeholder for long, but I would be comfortable with seconding a 75% motion.
I will amend mine to 75.
Second.
Motion to second to amend that language to 75%. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Bachman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
No.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
No, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Now, let's, is that a motion on the, on that number or the whole ordinance?
Motion on the, on that question.
So now we need to move approval of the ordinance. That would be a motion.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the ordinance. Has amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bachman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
No.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, next is County Finance Director Jacobs, Bismarck Mandan, Bismarck Morton Detention Center. Sales tax bond escrow agreement. Welcome.
Chair Bittner and Commissioners, you are correct. We are finally discussing the long awaited escrow agreement for our sales tax bond. Within your packet are three items which we received from Bond Counsel a couple week or two ago. One of those is an amendment to our joint powers agreement. This goes back to the bond issuance in 2014 and the reason for the amendment is, let me back up. It's a joint powers agreement with Morton County. For the bond, and I don't think, I don't think it has a lot of jail operational stuff. It's mostly bond. So what the amendment is doing is it's fixing our ownership percentage in the jail based on the actual principal and interest payments each entity has made on the bond. In the original joint powers agreement, it said the final ownership percentage will be determined by payments. And so that's, that's what we're doing with the amendment. And the, the final numbers came to an ownership percentage of 83.07% Burley and 16.93% Morton. And just for a refresher, that's one number. That's our, our ownership in the building. There are, there are different numbers for operations. There's different numbers for the land and there's different numbers for maintenance. So it's, it's a little bit complicated. So I, I'm not quite sure where that number would come into play other than demolition of the building because maintenance is dealt with somewhere else. But anyway, it's something we had to decide and so that's, that's what it ended up being. The second item is an escrow agreement. So that's just, just as it's, as it sounds, we've got enough money to pay off the bonds and so we're, we're going to deposit those into an escrow account. And our trust officer will, will make the future payments on the bond. This is, in legalese, known as a defeasance. And it allows us to take the bond off the books as a liability and replace it, well, we don't, it's, it's off the books. But it's, it's basically swapped with this asset, which is this escrow account. So the escrow account is equal to the liability and so legally, we're allowed to take it off our books. So you'll see that drop off our, our audit report, for example, this, this year, 2025. One item, two items, sorry, three items in the escrow agreement. The, the construction fund will be released to Burley. So that is in the escrow agreement. That's that $95,000 that we discussed a couple weeks ago that, that you, you, the board voted to earmark for Burley East for some of those construction costs. So that's, that comes back to us. The reason it comes back to us instead of us and Morton is I think we are, we are we're paying some, some expenditures for Morton related to the lawsuit that's going on. And so, so anyway, we've, they kind of owe us a little bit there and so the construction fund comes back to us. Just feel, so, so anyway, that's, that's that one issue. That's in the escrow agreement. The other issue is that the, any excess in the escrow fund will be returned at the same ratio it went in. And then the third item is that once this is signed, and we can, we can talk about that maybe, maybe this week because it needs a signature from the auditor and the chair. Morton is meeting on May 8th and so we have a couple days. And then once it's signed, it will be delivered to BND and then it's pretty much it. According to Bond Counsel, that's pretty much all we need to do is sign it and send it to BND and it's effective. So the third item is the, is a resolution. So the resolution is in your packet. I would recommend you adopt the resolution. If I may recognize two people in this bond, if that's okay, I'd like to do that. The first person I, I wanted to publicly recognize was our tax director, Al Veetmeyer. When, when Mr. Veetmeyer was the appointed auditor, he, he did a refinancing deal on these bonds. Interest rates had come down and he was able to save the county $7.5 million. Well, the counties. Burley and Morton, $7.5 million by refinancing this. And I got that from, from the guy that did the original bond deal at Collier's. So I'm pretty confident in those numbers. And then the second person I'd like to recognize is our deputy finance director, Taylor Schmidt. He did quite a, quite a bit of research on the, on the bond documents. There's hundreds of pages. And because of his research, we were able to structure sort of a longer repayment where we were able to take money that we borrowed at two and a quarter percent and invested at 4% until 2032. And so I just wanted to, to thank those two individuals because that's a significant savings. And some of that money is coming back to the county, to both counties when we, because basically we need less money to put into the escrow agreement because of these, these two, two deals. So that's the other issue is when the escrow agreement's in place, any, any excess funds that we have at, at BND are going to come back to us. So those are some of those half cent discussions that we had this summer. So again, resolution's in your packet. I'd, I'd recommend we adopt the resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chair, I would assume we would need three motions?
Yes.
One for each item or one for the whole thing?
I think the resolution has all of them in there. I took a look at it. It's got, it's got the JPA, it's got the escrow agreement. So I think we just need to adopt the resolution.
I will move to approve the resolution in our packet.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bachman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Lee. Appreciate all the hard work on that.
Before he leaves.
Sheriff, we, this is 82, what, 82 and 18 approximately. Is that what we started way back when? Wasn't it that same ballpark, 82 and, the ownership of the building? About 82, 82, 18? And do they have to approve this?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, like Lee said, there's a lot of different numbers in those joint powers agreements. The ownership and the operating percentages are the two main ones. And so I'm trying to remember here, I think, I was more of thinking it was in that 85, 15.
Okay.
Was where it first started out and maybe Lee can correct me on that as far as the ownership.
Okay.
And then the, the percentage, I would say, is more in that 75, 25 for the operation.
That's on, based on prisoner days and?
Correct, on the prisoner numbers and then we negotiated that admin fee in there. So that's about 75, 25, 85, 15 on the ownership roughly.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Munson.
I want to recognize Finance Director Jacobs. I really appreciate all of the work that Lee has done on this. This has been a very heavy lift. He's worked diligently to make sure both Morton County and Burley County are whole and in a great place here. So I wanted to recognize Lee for his work as well. So thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Appreciate it. Kind of relief to get that behind us as far as the responsibilities and the payoff and the whole thing. the whole thing. County HR Director Binder, 2024 turnover report, 2026 employee increase projections, and leave sharing policy. Welcome, Pam.
Chairman Bittner, Commissioners, this evening I have the three things. The first one is our 2024 turnover report, and that was calculated manually. Hopefully next year, we will have automatic reports. But we do have a ten-year trend on that bar chart, so I'm just going to highlight a few things on the report. That ten-year trend on the bar chart, if you look at those bars, it's cyclical, goes up, comes down, goes up, comes down. The lowest year was 2019 at fifteen percent turnover rate. The highest years is 2023 and 2024, both at twenty-two percent. Part of that is just the trend of what's going on in the nation and North Dakota in general. I did look up some statistics on the unemployment website. We, Burley County is in Region Seven, so it's us and a few of the surrounding counties, and we have a two-point-eight percent unemployment rate for Region Seven. And when I dug a little further, there's a little under fifteen hundred unemployed individuals looking for work and almost four thousand job openings in that region. So you can see why we're having a hard time with our jobs, trying to keep people in them and trying to get people. I did break down the last four years of turnover by department. It's no surprise detention, the Burley Morton Detention Center is high with turnover rate. So is the Burley County Human Service Zone, and the Human Service Zone are still Burley County employees, even though they're on the state's merit and they have their own policies. They are Burley County employees, there's eighty-one individuals. And the, the third would be the state's attorney at around ten percent, fourteen percent. Those are attorneys. You, one, Attorney One's Attorney Two's. We have higher caseloads, and we have a hard time getting attorneys, because we are fighting for them, you know, from every other industry, private, government. So we are making some headway with that. One of the other things, our statistics for Breezy HR, our applicant tracking system, we processed, the HR department processed eight, processed eight-hundred-and-sixty-one applications in 2024 for sixty-six positions. We disqualified two-hundred-and-sixty of those people through background checks, and we had almost a little under twenty thousand personal views. And what that means is they may have viewed it, but they may have started the application, never completed it. So that's twenty thousand. So in that, within that twenty thousand, we were handholding some of those people, sending them emails, calling them, sending them texts, trying to get them to complete the application. So those are not all just views, some of them are hands-on by the HR department. The other thing is that pie chart that's in there, that shows our recruiting sources. Indeed Sponsored is the main one, and we have to pay for those, but what it does is it brings our positions up to the top, so when somebody's querying on Indeed, or they have a, a search set up, that our position will be one of the top ones, or one of them that will go directly to those candidates that are qualified. But that costs us a little bit of money. Some of the other ones are the candidate port, portal, Indeed itself without sponsoring them, and then just other job categories, because Indeed, or Breezy HR does spider out to Indeed, spiders out to Career Builders, spiders out to every site that it can. So we are looking for, we're spiding out as far as we can get. Right now, we have twenty open positions, and that is full-time positions, permanent. That doesn't include any seasonal positions. We're having a hard time, surprisingly enough, recruiting administrative assistants. We've never had a hard time with that position. We've had, in the Recorder's Office, I think we've opened that position up three or four times. We have offered it to individuals, and it seems like the day before they come on, after we've closed the process, they get a, a counter from the job they're at, or they find a different job. So then we have to restart that recruiting process. It was a Recorder's Office, we're looking for now two, because we had one person retire as well. The, that Burley Morton Detention Center, the administrative assistant process, I think we've opened three or four times, and we did finally hire someone who's supposed to be starting May nineteenth, so we're hoping that that person comes. So the other thing that I looked at is the demographics for Burley County. We fall right into that forty to forty-nine demographic, that's the majority of our employees, with the demographic thirty to thirty-nine and fifty to fifty-nine on either side being the, the second most people. So if you look at that fifty to fifty-nine, in a few years, we're probably going to be turning over positions. And if you look at that sixty, we have ten people that are over sixty, sixty, over sixty-five, so they could retire anytime. So we are older in general. In certain departments, we are younger. The Detention Center is one that we have a lot of that under-twenty-six age group, because there's a lot of turnover in that department. So we fall right in that forty to forty-nine employee age group, the demographic. Our male versus female, male-to-female ratio is actually pretty steady, it's like forty-seven to fifty-three percent. Now, if you go into the individual departments, you'll find some of them are male-heavy, because it's a male-heavy occupation, such as Highway Department. Other ones are female-heavy, because traditionally, it's been a female career, which HR department, we have four females. There are getting to be more males in the HR field, but they're, they're still dominated by females in that field. I did include our workforce safety insurance premium billing, because that is a cost for having turnover, especially in our Detention Center. It's a hands-on job in the Detention Center and the Sheriff's Department, and even in our Burley County Human Service Zone, even though they're braided separately, they're hands-on, they're dealing with the people. They're getting the door slammed in their faces, they're getting inmates that they have to control. So we get claims, and the claims drive our premium costs. So we do have high premium costs, and that is part of the problem with turnover. So that's all I have on turnover, is there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions on that? Commissioner Schwab.
I have a commission, a question for everybody here, including Pam. At the extension, at the weed board, and at the Highway Department, the only holdup for finishing our budgets, what are we going to do on this COLA and step deal? How long do we have to wait to get that? That always seems to be kind of a last-minute deal. You can't really put a budget together without it, you know?
That will be the second item on the agenda.
That's the next item in the agenda there.
I, I know it's here, but we haven't decided.
Yeah, we haven't got there yet. We're going to talk about that next.
So when roughly does that get decided?
Next.
That doesn't actually get decided until the preliminary budget, and even after the preliminary budget, if you choose something, you can always go down on the final budget. You can't go up, but you can go down.
So we'll, we'll provide a guidance today.
And that, that's what I'm looking for, is the next item is the guidance on the pay step and?
Any further questions on the turnover report? Okay, let's move into the.
And the second one is the, the pay step and cost of living, the increase. The department heads met last, April thirtieth, and it was decided by the department heads to try and propose a pay step and a two percent COLA. The pay step is right around, on average, about two, two-eighty-nine, two, two-point-eight-nine percent across the board. Now, our ARC-Peg structure doesn't mean that everybody gets that two, some might get three, some might get two and a half, it just depends on where they're at in that pay step, because it does go, work its way up to market, and then it comes back down. So with that, it's roughly about a two-point-eight-nine percent increase with just a pay step. Then a one percent on top of that would be right around two-hundred-and-seventy thousand, rough estimate. And then one more on top of that is probably right around three-hundred thousand. And that's just my rough estimates, because I'm not quite sure where to go, so I'm not going to put all the work into something if we are not going to use it.
What, the department heads were recommending a single step?
A single step and two percent COLA.
Where did the two percent COLA come from?
Well, the two percent COLA came from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, that two-point-four percent increase overall on gross domestic product. And then the pay step is, the, the pay step is to keep everybody moving up, because if we don't, we're hiring employees in at the same pay step next year that we're hiring them in this year at, so we have pay compression.
Right, and recently, we, we went through a case where we had to do some significant salary adjustments within certain departments to try to get up to market and whatnot.
Mr. Chairman, what, what was last year's one step and?
No, two steps and two percent.
Two steps and two, that was, we figured that was, what, seven or something like that?
Seven point eight-seven, around there.
Eight.
So I'm not, I'm, I'm looking for guidance, I'm not looking for a formal motion. I will put the numbers together so that we can get them out for the budgets, so that we can have something to look at.
Mr. Chairman, have, have you heard from the city at all? Do we know where they're at?
I have not yet.
Heard from anybody at all?
Um.
Everybody waits for the first person to take a move.
Yeah, everybody's, everybody's asking us. I've, I've been asked by three or four different counties, what are you doing?
Commissioner Schwab, have you had a discussion at the Highway Department or in any of the other departments about that? Have they had any concerns?
Yes, we did today.
Okay.
And Marcus, I think, can back me on that if he's awake.
His head's upright.
There's a shot.
Marcus, can you help me here?
He's put in a long day.
Come on, there. We're, what we're looking at is our turnover.
Started at four AM, didn't you?
Commissioners, as far as putting our budget together, we've already basically done our preliminary. We had to assume some number, and we assumed four-point-five percent just to get a number into our budget, so we can start looking at where we're at, so.
So the one and the two is about right.
So the one and the two is about?
Yeah, that, we were looking at the, you know, one step and two percent is roughly, you know, gets you to that four-point-four, you know, someplace in there, so.
I'm comfortable with that as a guideline.
Yeah, I don't.
Because it's going to come back for a discussion anyway, but if department heads want to start working off those numbers, I, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, I can take that and start working on them, so I can get the bud, that part of the budget to the department heads.
It appears to be the consensus.
Okay.
Will that keep us, will that keep us in the ballpark with everybody else around in the market?
It should.
Should?
It should.
Okay.
Once we find out what they're doing.
So one step and a two percent COLA. Okay.
So the third thing I have is a leave sharing policy, I just have a revision on that. We've been getting a lot of calls from employees that are interested in leave sharing, but there's requirements, they can't be on their probationary period, they have to be in good standing to do leave sharing. So what we needed to do is we needed to add that to the policy, and then the Family Medical Leave Act changed some of their requirements, and so we had to add that to this policy. So I'm looking for approval for this policy.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second to approve the leave sharing policy and further discussion. Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Mun, Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chair Bittner.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Consideration of Missouri Valley Complex bids and RFP submittals, who's got that?
Take it.
Chairman and Commissioners, the, a couple meetings ago, the Commission authorized to go ahead and send out for RFPs for the wetland delineation project. We did receive four bids, which was surprising, which is a very good turnout on those, and so I put a synopsis, Commissioner Munson and myself went over the bids, and we looked at the proposed amount. Here you can see the amount, so Metal Arc Environmental, that the NTE means not to exceed, that thirteen thousand dollars, and then you can see all the, the other amounts here as well that was submitted. That's pretty much all I got, at this time at least, unless there's questions.
Chair, if I can, we were expecting triple, the amount of the low bid, so we're very, very excited about the, the numbers that we received. I would make the mo, I would move that we accept the more engineering bid at seven thousand dollars, but the question, let's just leave it at that, accept that bid.
Second.
Mr. Chair, the, the amendment may come here now from the discussion. The question would be, I have money in my operation budget that could pay for it out of the Missouri Valley Complex, or we could use the Missouri Valley Complex Fund.
For what?
For the delineation cost of seven thousand dollars for the wetlands.
Oh, okay, okay.
I would prefer to take it out of the operational budget, but I wanted to ask your guys' thoughts.
Do we have excess in that budget at this point?
I didn't have a lot of stone removal, which, which I was budgeting for, and so I do have extra.
Shouldn't that come out of the, out of the Missouri Valley funds and?
Like you said, it could come out of the operation, or it could come out of the, the reserves. It could be either or, but.
Well, it depends on how you look at it, is, is this an investment in the operation, or is this the build? I, I would like, I, I would prefer to take it out of the operation, just because that's where the money's at, and, and that reserve fund.
Stays whole.
Stays whole, yeah, exactly. So I, I would prefer it came out of the operational budget if there's excess in there.
Yeah, I do have, so.
Can you give me that GL number, just to make sure?
I'm looking at it right here, where do I find the GL number? Oh, I gotta blow that up much bigger.
Give me the first four or five and the last four or five.
The GL is going to be two-nine-eight-two dot four-five-two-one-zero dot zero-zero-three-eight-two, to be exact.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's a question, that's not part of the motion.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
I would need to amend the motion to decide which account to take it from.
And your recommendation is?
Out of the operations. Yep.
Second.
Well, I already seconded it. We're just having discussion right now about putting an amendment into which?
Which account.
Which account this is coming out of.
Yep. Mr. Bittner, you have an opinion.
Yeah, I, I, yes, I'm not in favor of spending any money to figure out where the wetlands is, because I've been out there so long that I know where the wetlands are, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna support.
Did you put a bid in? Did you put a bid in?
No, I'm not an engineer, you know?
But it's part of the process.
Yeah, it's part of the process, we have to do it.
Well, that's up to you, but like I said, I, I know where it's wet and whatever, but so you want to, is there a, let's deal with the motion to begin with. Do you want to amend the motion to?
I would amend my motion to take it out of the operations GL account that I gave auditor Spence Kowski.
And I'll amend my second.
Okay, so any further discussion on the amendment? Call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Chair Bittner.
No. Now, as to the, the motion to approve, any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Chair Bittner.
No. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, anything else on that?
Yep, we've got somewhere.
So, yeah, so we also were authorized to go ahead and advertise, open up the bids for the hayland properties in Missouri Valley Complex, as well as the farmland properties in the Missouri Valley Complex. The farmland area was to be, go ahead and put a crop on there for 2025 growing season, and then to replant it in a pasture cover crop for ongoing years, so we can just go ahead and put that back to pasture, or hayland, or however the Commission chooses to use it. We did receive a bid from DJ Coleman, he's a guy who has farmed it for, I don't know how long, very long time, and that's the only bid we received on the, on the farmland portion.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion. Second. Motion second to approve the land rent proposal as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the rule.
Commissioner Monson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Chairman Bittner?
Yes, motion carries.
All right. And then final one is the hayland portion. We did not receive any bids on that hayland portion. However, I did receive a phone call from a fellow who has done it in the past. He said that he wasn't able to submit a bid, but he would like to go ahead and continue haying that area.
I would move to approve to extend his lease for the next three years.
Julie, do we have to re-notice that, or can we just go ahead and extend that lease?
Because there were no, I guess, applications or bids that were submitted to that, and then he reached out, we can go ahead with extending the one he's currently got.
Second.
That the current agreed rate?
Yes. He's done a great job for us. He keeps all that hay. He keeps, takes the hay off as quickly as he can. We need him to keep doing that.
It's good upkeep.
Yes, it is.
And for how long a term?
Three years.
Well, same kind of thing I have done on my land, and I actually give it away, so that it does get cleaned up. But any further discussion? Seeing none, call the rule.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Monson?
Yes.
Chairman Bittner?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else on the complex?
No, we're done.
All right. Well, we get to that little part about other business. Anything else for the good of Burley County?
Yes, actually, I have a couple of things. First of all, is there representative Summit Carbon Solutions here? No. With that, Chair Bittner, either yourself or Julie, could we get an update, just where we're at with the litigation with Burley County on our, with the?
Pipeline?
Pipeline stuff?
I can do a quick one. There was a motion to dismiss filed by Summit Carbon Solutions, and we're, there was a hearing held. We're just waiting for the judge's order.
Okay. Thank you.
About the only other thing that I would add is that I had an email that one of the internists involved, that was for the PSC, I think, withdrew, but it's of no, means nothing to us.
Yeah, no bearing on?
No.
Okay. And then one other thing, as far as the Weed Board, we should be ready for citizen board applications. I meant to bring that up at, on the Weed Board section, but that should be up on the county website, and I'll get verification on that for our next meeting going forward. For the Weed Board citizen applications, yeah.
Well, I think that, we haven't had a discussion about that, have we? As far as doing that, I think the portfolio holder is?
Darren is not ready yet.
Is he not?
We're going to have some stuff that we're going to be bringing here that can get resolved before we get a citizen Weed Board, if we even need one, to be honest with you. So the thing about it is, we don't want to be calling in a dedicated Weed Board two or three times when we can come here and do our work. Once we get the office set up, and Darren is getting close to it, then fine. So I would like to hold off on that.
Okay.
We'll let you, we'll let you know.
Did they get paid before?
Pardon me?
The members, did they get paid before the citizen member?
They got $85 per meeting mileage, and the advisor got $90 an hour, and that's why the meetings went from 20 minutes to an hour and a half, you know? So.
Well, I don't know. I serve on one board here. I serve on the city planning and zoning, and I don't get paid for that.
We, the water resource district gets well paid.
Well, why don't I, damn it?
Would you reply?
Well, we, no, we passed a motion at one time that all boards and whatnot.
Well, we're all members of the Weed, we're all Weed officers.
I brought that up too at one point, Chair. We were talking about the park board. As we sit for the park board, we don't get paid, you know?
Here it comes.
Chairman Bittner, Commissioners, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
Percentual code, Commissioners cannot receive stipends, because you receive your pay for Burley County.
No, 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 I don't, I don't.
What ones are not, what volunteers are not paid a monthly stipend, or a meeting stipend?
Julie's going to get asked the question.
It's county commissions. They're 11s and 10s.
I know we pay Social Service Board, Water Resource Board, Park District.
Well, I got paid by the county when I was mayor on county planning and zoning. I got a little addendum on that.
Yeah, so what, what's, what's with the?
Just curious. Good time to look at it, since we're in budget.
Do you have?
Well, she's doing that. Can I ask?
Because I know that, I know that there's an addition on the check that I've received, that's 65 or 85, or whatever it is for the county planning.
Can I have a quick question while she's looking that up?
Because I'm not going to, I'm not going to donate that kind of time. That's been 16, 17 years on that board, and I'm done.
You want back to pay then? No, we're talking.
Well, I'm just.
Quick question while she's looking that up. Where are we at on budget? And have we, Budget Committee met, and have they started?
No, Budget Committee has not.
Our auditors waving over there.
That was actually an item I was going to put on the next agenda. However, if you want to discuss it right now, which you really can, the budget worksheets have been sent out to the departments, to the department heads, and they are, they have them. And my question for the next meeting was going to be, if this commission wants to continue with the Budget Committee, like we have the last couple of years, and if you want me to go ahead and set dates for that to be, present to you at the next meeting.
I would say so, yes.
Yeah, something like the present.
Is that a consensus, or?
Consensus, yeah. We want to keep that committee.
Okay, I'll put it on the next agenda.
Do we get paid for that? Oh, I guess.
Ask Julie.
I'll have a answer for you next time. How about that?
Okay. We do get paid for that, essentially.
Okay, sounds good. We'll hear more about that later. Anything else for the good of Burley County? We're adjourned. Thank you.